Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, September ninth. My name is Jason Crohn, Select Board Chair. With me tonight is Vice Chair Diane Gale, Clark Doug Mogul, our C O, Nicole Parker, Assistant C O, Nadine Signoni, and our secretaries down in the office, Lisa Anderson, running the cameras and reporters. We'll start the meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance, Randy Brown.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll start tonight with public comments. If anyone has any public comments, all I ask is you raise your hand, acknowledge you, and just give me your name and address for the record. Does anybody in the audience have any public comments? It's easy enough.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, you might want to make notice to everyone that tonight's the first time ever in the history of the town of Southwick that I'm aware of that we're live streaming this meeting.
As Mr. Mogul said.
I just threw the suggestion out that one of our residents gave.
Very good.
I have no technology skills whatsoever.
We also don't know if it's actually happening, but that's the theory.
We had a couple of minutes, so.
Anybody online?
Anyone online, public comments before I do move forward. No hands, no hands.
One, two, and three.
So we've got like two minutes to stick this in here, so I'm going to, just for notice, I have moved, as I like to call them, the less consequential things from this point forward on the agenda while I'm the chair. They're going to be moved to the back, acknowledging payroll warrants, minutes and such like that. This way, we don't have people that don't need to sit here and wait and listen to all of the stuff that is not consequential to them. Wait and wait and wait, so that from this point forward is how things are going to be run for the agenda for the remainder of my term as Chair. So we've got two minutes, so I'm going to go to the minutes for the August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four. I'm going to need a motion to accept those minutes.
I will make a motion to accept those minutes as amended for minor name corrections.
Very good.
Yeah, I had some corrections that I need to send in, so as amended.
As amended, all right, very good. Roll call vote, Jason Perron, aye.
Doug Mogul.
We've got, I think we've got enough time to sneak in the executive session minutes, do we have them? August twenty-sixth.
No, yep. Being handed this way. I'm just. Make motion to accept the executive session minutes.
Second, roll call vote, Jason Perron, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
So we are right at six oh five where we have a scheduled public hearing, a public hearing. For the Roma Restaurant to transfer the liquor license from Victor Ferrantino, from Martino D Benedetto, Frank D Benedetto, and Mario Ferrantino, sir. Need a motion to open the hearing. Second. Need to read the legal ad in its entirety, so, town of Southwick Select Board Liquor License Authority. Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws that V F Roma Italian Cuisine Incorporated, doing business as Roma Restaurant, has requested a public hearing to approve a transfer of the premises, restaurant liquor license number zero 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 five dash R S dash one two 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 to Roma F M M Incorporated. Premise is located at five sixty-one College Highway, the premises is one floor used by a restaurant and bar. Has three entrances, three exits, and a total square footage of ten thousand four hundred sixty-six square feet. Public hearings to be held on September ninth here, twenty twenty-four, six oh five P M in the Town Hall and the Land Use Hearing Room, second floor. Four fifty-four College Highway, Southwick, Mass. Zero one zero seven seven, an interested party should attend or submit written testimony. Select Board, myself, Ms. Gale, and Mr. Mogul. So we have the motion to open. So he does vote. Do we vote?
Uh, we did not, I made the motion.
You had the motion.
It was seconded.
Roll call vote, Jason Perron, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
All right. So we're here tonight, and everybody here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thanks for having us, my name is Dan Kelly, I'm a lawyer in Springfield, I have the privilege of representing petitioners in front of you. I have, to my left, right close to me is Mario Ferrantino, far end is Frank D Benedetto. Two of the three proposed partners of this new restaurant, or same old restaurant to some degree. And the other, they're both cousins, the other proposed member is Martin D Benedetto, who is also a cousin of these three. All three of these cousins are also the nephew of Mr. Ferrantino, who's a long time outbreaker there, just to kind of orient you who they are. All three of these individuals grew up working in Roma Restaurant for the time, they were pretty fairly young and have worked in there and know all the recipes in and out. What's proposed here is for them to take it over, they've made a significant investment in your town. The overall investment is a million dollars, the property itself transferred, the deed was registered in February of this year, and now this is the last component, which is the business, is secured by a significant note, and you have all the financial information in front of you. Just to give you an idea, Mr. Frank D Benedetto currently owns Take Five in Agawam and has for fifteen years or so. He has absolutely positive clean record with the town of Agawam License Board as well as the A B C C. Mr. Ferrantino also has a liquor license in the town of Agawam at Ferrantino's. He has no issues at all, has a clean record in front of the Board of Agawam as well as the A B C C. Two experienced operators, two experienced restaurant operators coming into your town to operate this restaurant. Mr. Mario Ferrantino is the manager of record on the liquor license. He will be the one, be there a lot, you'll see his face there, and they're both partners of the restaurants, but this is their new project, this will, you'll see them a lot. They're all tip certified, everybody on the roster who worked there will be tip certified. They propose to probably start there someplace in the neighborhood of fifteen people or so. When they do open, they're going to start off with a little bit of a slimmed down menu. It's tough to get work and they don't want to overextend themselves right away and have a large menu, they're going to start off with pizzas and some limited menu offerings, so they get an idea, build up the great reputation that Roma has always had, and then as they get the better help and they get more confidence and more inspired, they'll expand it to the bigger menu that they hope to have, and they hope to do that very shortly. But what we have here is individuals who have a long familial nexus to that area, they grew up working in there. It's their passion, their dream, they're in this field, they're experienced operators with very clean records, and they look forward to having a long and hopefully prosperous business in your town. And we provided all the particulars, and again, in terms of the liquor board, they have never had of any violations, they tell me, at all, and I checked the A B C C, that's true as well.
Either you gentlemen want to say anything? Can you say it any better in your turn?
No. Sounds good job.
I have no question.
He answered all the questions we would normally have. I'm happy to see there's going to be a longevity to the establishment, and that is a family longevity, that's fantastic, thank you. Might do harm to Take Five a little bit. But better for us.
I always read everybody the riot act, so we spoke previous, and so I don't need to rehash it, but we take, we have a zero tolerance policy, right, as far as, you know, serving underage, yada, 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 right? You guys know it, you're operators, you know it, but we're on the record with, we just have a zero tolerance policy for it, and I'm certain that you guys will do a fine job over there, and we're really looking forward to having the legacy of Roma's continue and, you know, have that place back open again.
I appreciate it.
We really, you know, best of luck, and, you know, we hope you do very well.
Good that you're going slow first.
Thank you.
Ramp up.
They don't want to cannibalize their other places, to the extent they want to get some good people in there, and then as things, you know, the, as you're sure you know, in the restaurant business, a couple of bad reviews early on are terrible, so they don't want to have any of that, they want to start off and have, get their hands right on there with the pizzas and the short things, and then kind of move off and expand the menu as they go. But they're hoping that'll be pretty quick.
Sure, if you guys follow your uncle's pattern, you're going to be fine anyway, so, hope so. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the transfer of the license? Sir, say your name and address.
So when and then I think it will be in control vector somehow, and living down there would be fine.
So, anyone else, anyone online? Is there anyone is here to speak against the transfer? Right? I don't think there's. Was there any written testimony submitted?
No.
Nope. No testimony, no emails that I've received. Then make a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second. Roll call vote, Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul, yes.
At this point, if anyone for whatever reason has any other things they want to say, we need to talk about, I don't think it's the case, I'd be looking for a motion to grant the transfer.
Motion to grant the transfer of the license.
Doug Mogul will second. Roll call vote, Jason Perron, aye. Doug Mogul, aye.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
I appreciate it.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, very nice to meet you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so going to jump in here too, in regards to my comment about getting people out of here that don't need to sit. I'm going to have Chief Spanowitz, would you come on up, and we're going to talk about Mr. Our Call Firefighter Dwight Gregoire.
Right, so certainly, this is Dwight Gregoire, he's been through the hiring process for the fire department, his interest is per diem paramedic, full-time for a neighboring department, and was a good experience firefighter, we would likely have him going.
Come on up, Dwight. Nice to meet you, Jason Perron.
Hi, Doug Mogul, nice to meet you.
So I guess a question I'll ask is, what wants to be, you want to be a call firefighter in Southwick?
Absolutely, yeah, I have actually a coworker of mine that works with me at the full-time fire department, Matt, who's Call Force member here as well, and she actually said it might be a good idea to look into it here, and throughout my tenure as a firefighter in the EMS field, I have had, I've heard nothing but great things about the town of Southwick and working here and just the core people and the just capabilities it's able to bring, and that's what, for the most part, interested me. I'm a firefighter for about nine years now, same with EMS, and just looking for good per diem work, and that's why I was more so looking at the town of Southwick, you guys are a good department that offers some good per diem positions, and that's what I was really looking forward to, help supplement my full-time position. And that's my main hope, I heard it's a big family atmosphere, and that's really what I want out of the job.
Where are you currently?
I'm a full-time firefighter, paramedic in Hadley.
No questions for me, sir. You don't want to ask me a normal question? Ah. Sure. You always say it. I figured it's worn out by now, but since you insist, so what's standing between you and becoming a Call Firefighter slash per diem medic in the town of Southwick?
To my knowledge, just the blessing of this board here.
You would be one hundred percent correct. I know he is.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dwight Gregoire to be Call Force firefighter at EMS.
Doug Mogul will second the motion.
Very good, roll call vote, Jason Perron, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
I'm glad you've heard nothing, we're good there. All right, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda is appointments, we are going to start with an interview with Stephen Roach for the Economic Development Commission, and Gabriella Peterson, we're just going to do the Economic Development Commission first, so.
Welcome.
Nice, Stephen, so why do you want to be a member of the Economic Development Commission?
I'm fairly new resident of Southwick and look for opportunities to get involved. And prior to current employment, I'm currently employed with D O D, prior to that, grew up working in a family business, so just want to be.
D O D?
Yep.
Or in defense?
Yep.
Where at?
For Defense Contract Management Agency, I work out of Connecticut.
Okay.
Prior to that, worked in a family business, so just looking to use my enthusiasm to get involved and hopefully be part of the success in Southwick.
So I know you've attended a couple of the Economic Development Commission meetings. Where do you see yourself, what skill do you think you can provide?
Well, I'm still kind of getting my feet wet in what it is actually that needs specific attention, but I've been part of a couple of other boards of organizing teams, put on the Web City Brew Fest in Westfield, and hopefully bring my experience with teamwork to this team as well.
How long have you lived in South?
About three years now.
What do you think's the best part of South?
Best part, I think, is the opportunity for recreation, being mainly the ponds, bike trail, things like that. And then what kind of attracted me is things like that, and then just looking into the future about raising a family and stuff like that, seemed like a good, maybe do it.
What do you think needs the most improvement? We want to be home at seven thirty.
Got it. I think the people that sat here before me that are going into Roma's is a great, great step in the right direction.
I'm glad we have you that interested, I see the E D C Commission Chairman here, Mr. Dilek.
Yes. Yes, Stephen, that is my full endorsement, we very much need some extra hands, we have a lot to do.
Have you served on a border commission before elsewhere?
No.
No further questions.
No further questions. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will have Gabriella Peterson for the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
She's not, she's not interested anymore, she pulled out.
Okay.
Okay. Next item on.
Of course.
Call Force firefighters. Yeah. They're putting stuff off, so.
Can I read off the line?
Yeah. I'm going to do that as well. We are going to appoint the following Call Force firefighters. Probably. Check.
What's the two? John Simpson. Right? Yeah, the two that are not.
So the Southwood check is on, check mark. What's that? So, all right, we're going to be, the following Call Force firefighters are going to, we have Captain Brandon Johnson, Chief Force Fire Warden, Chief Spanowitz, Deputy Chief Brandon. How do I pronounce that?
Patwin.
Patwin. Deputy Chief Bishop. Carolyn Bradbury. Josh Gerard, Brian Schneider, Martin Beila. Matt Drennan, Matthew Barden. Tyler Buscemi. Dennis Day, Timothy Mannion, Anthony Siegel, Jessica Merlusi, Nicholas Chambers, Anthony Angada, Eric Brogan, David Dubcheck. Dubcheck, Nicholas Hope, Devin.
You're on your own.
What Mr. Mogul said. Christopher Garvey, Patrick Hope, Christopher Macchio, Michael Macchio, Cooper Smith, Julia.
Good luck.
Scotchless.
All right, Scotchless. Stephen Backman, Juan Rivera, Clark Robinson, Michael Marifuga, Ian Hurley, and Dan Valerie.
Valeri.
Valeri.
Pastor.
That's it, and we have two additional names of Paul Johnson and David Humphries.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Sure.
Just a point of clarification, Brandon Patwin is listed as the deputy chief, but it's only Deputy Bishop is the only deputy chief in the department, he is a career force member.
Ready? I'll make a motion to appoint those Call Force firefighters, as read off with the correction to the baton as a Call Force member, not deputy chief.
Yeah, it's correct, oh, I see. Okay. I'll second the motion with a question. So if we're not doing other town employees, why would we do these, is this a member of the Call Department?
Just because you, they were only supposed to do the Call Force, not the full-time people. The Call Force is literally appointed every year.
Correct, that's why I was cycling back to that, we've probably read too many names, but it's all good, the ones that are on there as.
God, they're talking.
Checkmarks.
On them, they never do this.
Yeah, but that included other people, I guess.
Right.
Okay.
That included D.
So it probably started with Mr. Drennan is where it should have started.
Yeah, so it wasn't, it wasn't broken down into separate lists. Don't believe it, I don't believe it's critical.
It is not, I would second the motion, that's, but that's why I had it.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Mogul. Roll call vote to appoint those Call Firefighters and firefighters in general. So roll call vote, so yes, Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Good. So now we need to do the emergency management members. I didn't keep the left hand, right hand, that was going to be so difficult. So we have the two opposite hands. So we are going to be looking to make the appointment for Emergency Management Director of Russ Anderson, Ian White as the Assistant Director, Chuck Darling as the Radio Officer, and members Eric Carroll and Keith Stromgren.
I just have a question. There are more members of the Emergency Management than this, right or not?
Yes.
And how come they're not here? Because this isn't annual.
Did they not indicate they wanted to be on, we don't get anything.
So we're going to appoint these with a question.
Yeah, we can leave that open, if there's others that still want to come forward, we can take care of that. Correct, because I, there was a couple conspicuous absences on there, and I thought that those were one-year terms.
One second, Jason.
That's fine, I'm going over these as well.
So the Dunlops.
The Dunlops.
On that.
So, yeah, they were going to stay involved, Charlie and I were staying, right, so here's the list, so. So who's the one online?
On our thing, we have Russ, Ian, Chuck, Eric, and Keith, but we don't have.
Maybe they.
And they are, so can you do it with just a question?
I would just do it as you did, you can always reappoint.
Yeah.
Additional points. I, I thought that there was one more person that was on there, but I guess he's, he just participates in some of the exercises as a non-member.
And then what? Where are races and.
That is seen.
This one was, what's the other one?
Races, search.
And are we not doing those with Gua, or is that another gang?
It's the same, it's the exact same.
The same people, usually, yeah.
Asba, and search is exactly the same list as Gua. Charles Darling. Eric, oh, Eric, Eric. Yeah, it's the same.
Okay, it is the same people.
So you can make an on-the-bus motions for those three.
Okay, so that was the Community Emergency, I'll make a motion to appoint these members to Community Emergency Response Team.
Races, Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Services, and Southwick Emergency Management Agency. I'll second her motion. Roll call vote, Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul, aye.
That takes care of the appointments for today.
Except for other boards and things that are later. Yes, no?
Yeah. Do you have to discuss all those in the motion?
That's one. Not for you. I mean, it's coming up under all different things.
No, yeah, we'll deal with the rest of those, you know, these were the ones that I went over the other day, so. So you're going to go on to the new business stormwater system management plan review and endorse, Randy?
Good evening, everybody, Tom Goddard, Stormwater Coordinator, Randy Brown, D P W Director. We are here tonight as part of our yearly report that is submitted to the E P A and the E P that essentially looks at our stormwater management systems, maintenance and performance. We're working under a permit that was drafted two thousand sixteen, I think started around two thousand eighteen or so. Roughly speaking, a ten-year timeframe with performance milestones in there. Uh, roughly speaking, a ten-year timeframe with performance milestones in there, so. Before us tonight, we have two components. The first is essentially a scorecard, our way of tracking our work. How many uh, inlet structures am I looking at on the streets? How many get serviced by, by our crew? Um. What level of sediments in those, making sure that we're responding at appropriate time to the sediment loading. Uh, out there. Uh, in addition to that, uh, each year has had certain milestones, this. Past year, uh, milestone that was specific was the implementation of a demonstrative. Improvement project within our MS four permit area. Uh, to date, we've. Completed two projects, then we get a couple uh, in with our. DPW Infrastructure Improvement Programs, uh, so those two locations, one was at um. Uh, excuse me, um, Bungalow uh, Street and Point Grove Road, where we have installed a set of subsurface enter chambers. And the other one at Wood. Side circle, Woodside Circle, I always miss things up, but across the street, um, with a similar project, that one uh, is intended to. Lessen erosive flows to the outfall from that subdivision. Um. There's a lot of other work that uh, we perform under this particular permit. Um, has to do updating our online mapping. We have a, a live, if you will, GIS mapping system. That tracks both our work uh, on a day-to-day basis, um, as related to this uh, system, and I also enter. The testing results for more of the kind of outfalls and trying to identify locations where there may be. Um, at least indications of illicit discharge. So to that point, and this, this could be. Uh, anything uh, from a, if you will, a septic system that started to break out and was draining into our municipal stormwater system. Um, sometimes it's just triggered by something as uh, someone doing some car washing, not eliciting activity on a residential scale. Um, but those things will show up in my testing. To date, we don't have. Any. Results that indicated in this. A successful array of parameters that say, uh, you need to dive in and do deeper investigations into this catchment area and figure out. Where an illicit discharge may be occurring. Uh, having said that much. Part of the tenure program is to look at the entire stormwater network within our permit area. So we have been on a voluntary basis proceeding uh, through different catchments and just ruling them out. Mostly uh, at this point in time, we're now going through popping manholes, looking to make sure that there's no. Uh, indications of illicit discharge inside those locations, which are usually invisible uh, to us. We want to be able to look at the inlets and the outfalls. That's our kind of annual part of the program. The other half that I look for this, so it's like what to endorse. Who is our stormwater management plan? That's a plan that uh, we have, uh, that is. An overarching uh, document, tracking both, if you will, these annual activities. And some of the previous performance requirements where we looked at. Um. Nitrogen loading, the different catchment areas across town. Um. Uh, as, as well as the original parameters under which uh, the town submitted for coverage under this permit. Uh, I should mention that we do a lot of this work in collaboration with uh, the Connecticut River Stormwater. Coalition. Is that right, Randy? That last word? Um, and uh, and they assist us substantially with our outreach messaging uh, platforms. Um, so in addition to the robust uh. DPW website that has a lot of information about our stormwater system and the do's and don'ts of it, um. There are also messages that go out via social media, uh, at bus stops and flyers. Some that uh, we've been distributing with our annual licensing efforts here for dogs and so on and so. That's probably too much talk for our intended seven thirty cutoff, but I wanted to at least give everybody a quick overview of what we're asking here. This is the annual report. Um, component right there, we do look for endorsement from the select board, so that can be submitted. And uh, and endorsement of that stormwater management plan. That uh, document behind it all. In interest of uh, of complete transparency, the detailed component that comes out of our coalition. Uh, coalition's outreach messages, that usually doesn't arrive until the end of the month, and that is not going to be a timely arrival for us to present this to you. Um, and look for that endorsement. So essentially, we're looking for initial endorsement of what we have today. Condition upon the receipt of that uh, information towards the end of the month from. PVP C.
I think I've asked you before, John, in the past.
Literally.
With the stormwater stuff, that's, we know things are getting more and more restricted, more and more regulated. In other places, they've had to in, implement a stormwater fee to help offset the cost of running this program. Is that something we're gonna have to worry about? Do you think in the future?
You want me to field that one, Randy?
Sure.
If you're just curious, what is someone to say? Perhaps someday.
Okay.
Uh, there is a cost associated with us maintaining our solar infrastructure and the cost for inspecting and monitoring and testing. Um, it is my understanding that where we sit today. That's not uh, I'm gonna say quite on the horizon. I'll look to Randy for any longer.
Well, Randy's in terms of perspective.
There's that one.
So, so there is a, this permit, it was a five-year permit, but there were conditions that extended beyond the five years, so it's a little confusing in that sense. But we are waiting for the next permit to be drafted. So the way that I see this permit is the first, this first draft, this first five-year permit, kind of re-force the towns to look at their stormwater system. Look at their bylaws, regulations, identify where the weaknesses are. Phase two is, okay, now you know what you're, now what you know what you need to do, now step two is implemented. So yeah, there possibly could be some, you know. More costly items that come out of the new permit, but that has yet to be drafted. So, at this point, we've been able to absorb these costs to our, through our tax rate. Other communities, I believe Westfield is one, they do have a stormwater fee that's attached to the tax bill. It's a funding source for that program.
That's how, after our discussion last week with funding sources and resources and where we need to find money from. You know, at, at least it's, I brought it up so people at least have. A clue that something was going on. You know, I know that reason it happened over there was because they needed to fund that. And they were mandated, you have to do this, you have to do that, so I just didn't know where we lied as far as. Is this something we're gonna have to mandate and are we gonna have to start calling? You know. Just be suck trucks out a little bit more often and it's gonna cost us some more money to do that, so. Um, it's really, you know, I know you and I, I guess, John, talked about it in the past and Randy, I know I've mentioned it multiple times, so I just wanted it. To just be out there that it's something that we may hear about in the future, hopefully not anytime soon. So.
It's also been. Prudent fiscal management too there. There had been some. Uh, forecast when this. Stormwater management discussion first came, that had over a million dollar price tag with it. And we pushed back and. You guys have done yeoman work to try to control some of those costs and keep them in line. So we haven't had to, as of yet, implement, say, a rain tax or whatever you wanna call it, right, like uh. Our sister city to the north has, right, but um. You know. This. This regulation is certainly. Lends itself to those types of.
Yeah, that's what I wanted.
We've been able to manage it to date.
John's been doing double duty.
Been a pleasure.
This is the same report I read last year with updated. Fiscal twenty-four activities.
That's correct. Uh, the report changes very slightly in content uh, every year. The stormwater management plan really only changes. As I discover new information, uh, which regrettably, you know, cascades through, you know, dozens, dozens of pages on it, but. Those are the fundamental.
You need to vote of this board as a conditional endorsement pending receipt of that updated. Report. I believe that was your ask.
That'd be great, and then what we can do is, once we get their permission, we can put the signature page on the select boards office and you can sign at that point.
I'll be looking for a motion to.
That was a motion that the way of what you said.
Well, I'll second your motion for that, but you know, however you wanna do it, but that's what you were looking for, right, a conditional endorsement. Of the stormwater management plan, subject to the receipt of the updated document. I'll make that motion.
It's sounding good, I'll second that.
Roll call vote, Jason Pro and I.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Thanks, John.
Thank you all so much.
So the next item on the agenda is to approve the amended agreement to extend the contract completion date to February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five. For the Hudson Drive to Sam West Road Connector Project.
Just real quick, the, so our contract had ended, um, we're just looking for an extension on that agreement. There's really no cost impacts. That our consulting is a little bit more time to finish that, that project. So I spoke with their. They had funding agency in MS Development, and they have no issues with this extension.
That's the case, then I guess they'd be looking for a motion to. Extend the agreement.
Motion made to amend that agreement to February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five for Hudson Drive and Sam West Road Connector.
Second. Roll call vote, Jason Pro and I.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul, yes.
The next item on our agenda, Randy, we're good, I think, unless you want.
Well, the tractor.
I was gonna say, unless you want to talk about the.
You have any questions, I can answer that.
So, we are looking to talk to Randy about here about approving the sale of the DPW boom mower to the town of Granville. Highway Department for five thousand dollars, uh. So. We uh, recently received our new one, right?
We did.
And the other one. I'm assuming needed repairs.
It's an older machine, nineteen ninety-five Kubota tractor. Um, probably a little better than what Granville's using now, so they're happy to use it, and I think actually sharing a tractor with. Tallon, so between the two committees, there's one tractor, so.
A reasonable offer, then I guess I would be looking for. A motion to approve the sale of the DPW boom mower to the town of Granville for the total of five thousand dollars.
Motion made.
Question. Sorry. Is that um. I guess I'll look to Mr. Parker, is that? Okay, that we didn't surplus it or post it for sale and we just sold it? So this is an adequate disposition in your opinion?
No.
You don't believe it's adequate disposition?
No, I believe it's, it's fine. I, I don't, yeah, we don't, I don't think uh, that's, doesn't fall under that um. I'm trying to think of that law, but it's, it's, I, I, we've done this several times in smaller towns.
I believe it's between communities, there, it's exempt from that.
Then I'll second the move.
So.
It's like you couldn't send it, sell it to John Smith down the street.
I just, we put it in the paper and someone offers ten thousand dollars for it. That's not very prudent. Stewardship of the town's money. You know. We do a lot with Granville, you know, we have a good working relationship with them. So I'm not opposed, I just want to make sure that we're being good stewards here and that we're. And I, I'm, I'm the last person in this room with some surety to ask about the value of a nineteen ninety-five Kubota. So I couldn't tell you a five thousand is a good amount. Fair amount or bad amount, so. I'm.
We thought it was more. Than we. Than we thought that we would ever get for it. Five thousand dollars.
I would concur with that, yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm the last person in the room to ask the value, I just wanna make sure we've done our, you know, we've often. Put stuff out there on Unibid or in the paper or whatever, and then we vote to surplus it and sell it. And then. That's what, and then that's our, our disposition. In this case, I don't know, and maybe there, if, if it's fine, it's fine, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Very good. I guess it's looking to roll call vote, Jason Pro and I.
Doug Mogul, yes.
I think that's enough.
That's it, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is gonna be the town administrator report, department reports. Goals and review process, um. Yes, we wanted to talk.
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything on it, okay.
I do not. So, I'm glad to do it, I just don't know how you guys wanna proceed on that.
On the what?
The goals and.
It's time for us to take a look at those and see where we are and.
I've given. Nicole several of mine, so I don't.
I have a list going, but.
I imagine you do.
I'll just. Forward to you.
Why don't we send it out for discussion the next week, in our next meeting?
Yeah, sure. Very good. Put that on for next meeting, so. Full discussion, um, and, 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 so. So we're gonna go right into other new business. Um, does anyone, I have nothing, so. Mr. Mogul.
Uh, new business?
Yeah, no. Mr. Parker?
No.
May Dean?
No.
All right, very good. So now we are gonna go into old business, starting with the appointments, boards and commissions, interview appointment list attached, um. Still, you brought up a name that I didn't. Floyd.
Chris Boyd is here, or, well, he's on the, are we going through the list of appointments, the other?
Yeah, right, yes, we're gonna. Try and take this and put this to bed.
Okay.
So. Cause I believe we wanted to.
Committee which we have not revived yet, and.
Is my name on that?
High speed.
I wrote in for everything, Mr. Boyd.
Oh, did you mean the cable, I mean the high-speed internet?
Yeah.
Oh, he meant the high-speed internet. Okay. Well, they kinda went together, so.
Might I come up, Mr. Wood? And if you're interested in all the other.
If I can be on two, I. Will do it.
So. So what's your interest in the high-speed internet?
Well, I've been on the committee since the very beginning, um. Tended most of the meetings, uh. Gone out and. Participated in the site visit with uh. Whoops City Fiber and been on several uh. Meetings. Uh, when they visited us here. So I'd like to finish it and see it through.
Yeah, my whole heart endorsement, that, that group has done yeoman work and. Everyone brings a unique uh, angle to the table. And it's been very helpful and hardworking, and whether it's. Looking at finances or analyzing contracts or. Um, the technical side of it, everyone on that committee has a role to play and, um, I all but tagged them. To resubmit to get back on there, so hopefully everybody did. Um, cause I don't think that there's a person on there, uh, that, that's been in attendance at all the meetings. Um. Should have a seat at the table.
They, they've all worked hard at it. They've all worked hard.
Yeah, and there's, and there's a lot of work to, to do, I think this would probably be, in all honesty, this will be the last year of the high-speed. Internet Subcommittee as an advisory. Uh, committee to this board, if we proceed, then we would, I would recommend to this board via the high-speed internet sub to come back to the select board to form. A true standing committee as part of the municipal light board. Which they're acting as municipal light board right now, but to have um, authority over that. Um, policy. And that system.
Okay.
And I think that they would, most of those folks would make good charter members if they, if they wanted to. Continue on with that.
So, um.
So it consists of interview?
So here's the thing, I know we, last, last meeting, we brought this up, I know Mr. Mogul had said there was, you know, we wanted to make sure there weren't people that were. Already on boards that. Maybe these, there was positions that were filled that people came in front of. So, what I would like to do tonight is get these appointments taken care of. You know, and I've talked to Nicole, you guys have done great work, I know when I first got on this board, there was absolutely just appointment direction was. Going six different ways, you guys have got it down to one general way.
Freeway.
We got about six, yeah, we got four or five ways, but we're getting closer. The only, Mr., Mr. Chairman, my only concern from the last meeting, obviously we had the posting issue, but. The, the other issue is, is that. If we have a, a committee of five and there are five applicants that are re, applying to be reappointed. I have no objection to proceeding, right? And subject to the, you know, if there was, unless there was a note from the chair of that committee saying, you know, hey. Yes, no. But. My concern was that if we have a board where we have five appointments. And. There's. Five people that were up for reappointment, plus we interviewed two more, we need to figure that out. Because somebody, when this is all over, two people are not gonna get appointed to that board. We need to figure out if it's people that are up for reappointment or, or the people that applied for appointment. There is no expectation of reappointment. But, in fairness, if we did not interview the person who is sitting in that seat now, we've done them a disservice. We should at least have that discussion. And I don't, and I think from my question last week was, there was one or two boards where that was going to be the case. And out of just utter respect and fairness, we should have that discussion before we vote to appoint people and. If, if not, I do not want to have the appearance that we removed anyone. If, if, not, I do not wanna have the appearance that we removed anyone. Obviously, there's no expectation of reappointment, but if a person is up for reappointment and they've gone on the portal and expressed an interest to be reappointed, and we don't interview them. Well, that's not fair. So we, I just, from a per- a perspective of fairness, I think a high speed internet, I think we're all set, I don't think we had any new applicants that were. Outside of that area on it, and if they've already reapplied, then we should, the folks that indicated interest, we should reappoint. And it should be an operator.
Get a list to Nicole of those. People with. New. Applicants, did you do that?
I did not. What was I supposed to do?
You were gonna. You offered to put a list together to Nicole to invite those persons who are sitting. And have new applicants basically challenging their seats.
Right, and do we have that, do we indeed have that case?
I believe there was two or three that were.
Depends on if we're going to create the open space. Subcommittee, because the people we interviewed are interested in the open space Subcommittee or whatever we want to call it.
Separate issue, I think, I think that you have to.
They apply for conservation.
Yes.
But their intent was to be the. Open space members.
And you need to follow your heart on that, because I don't, we have it, we don't have that open space committee. If we do, then you can have those, you know, the people that applied come back and say, look, I'd like, as soon as they, if we. Do vote to form that, or it becomes an advisory committee or whatever happens, and by the way, they can volunteer to help out the conservation permission at any time. Anyplace, anywhere, gladly use the help. Um, then we should do that, but if it was a matter of. Removing or appointing someone else to a seat, then we need, then we owe it, and I shame on me for not doing it. We can go do it, do the rest and come circle back to that.
So what I wanted to bring up in regards to my discussions with Nicole, like I said, you guys have done great narrowing it down. Um, there's a couple things, I'm not gonna go into great detail today, but you know, I think there's a couple tweaks we can do to this process. So we're not in September dealing with this, I know Diane has brought this up in the past. Um, I've got some ideas as far as some specific set deadlines, we fill these appointments, if there's openings, we deal with those openings. Down the road, so, um, I'm gonna work with Nicole putting that together, combining it with what you guys have done, and I think. Next year, whether I'm around or not. Then this will be a lot smoother, and we can have this. Not lingering into September, so, but I, I, I know what you were saying, Mr. Mogul, was, if there's anybody there, and part of that process that I've talked about is. Getting these commission chairs all in here involved, and telling us, hey, you've got this one and this one. Would you prefer to keep this one, would you prefer to keep that one, do you want this one, get some input from them, as well as, like you said. If a seat is. Contested, I guess, for lack of a better term, they, both parties should be, really, in my opinion, both parties should be here, if you don't show up. My opinion is the guy that showed up is the one who should get it. So, um, but that's my opinion. So, um, but.
But they have to be invited, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
This.
This is part of that tweaking of that process that we're talking about.
On those today, we will.
Let's roll.
Prefer those, let's.
Okay.
Carry on. While Mr. Boyd is sitting here.
Yeah, let's do.
Now we do high speed internet.
Absolutely.
Is there anyone, Mr. Chair, that?
I would like to, uh, I have to consult with one person, but I'll put forth a motion to reappoint. And I'm gonna give first and last names, cause we've got a collection of boys, uh, Christopher Boyd, Tom Colick, Jim Crowley, Ian Preswell, Marlene Quinlan. Bob Boyd, James Johnson, Ryan Peace. Jason Chiguer. To, to reappoint to the high speed internet.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, we'll make a roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Yes.
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
You made it, thanks for coming.
So, in lieu of what we just talked about, to verify we don't have any of these other positions, we need to, in my opinion. Wait on the rest.
No, I can tell you what they are.
Oh, you got them, written, nailed down?
Did them last week, we talked to people last week.
I just.
Good, right? We're ready to go through.
So let's, let's roll through these and get to them.
Add, there's no issues there.
Okay. So.
So what are the appointments that are up?
You're gonna make the motion?
Okay, so.
There was some shuffling there, correct?
Yes. So, we want to.
We're kind of moved.
Now we have, now we have room, all right, so we have. Bert Hanson.
As an associate, right? That's what he wanted to be? Or it just has a member?
I think you remade that, you're just. They'll come back to us when they want to shuffle, we'll, we will reappoint, if they wanna shuffle, they'll come back to us if they wanna shuffle.
I'm moving.
We do know we have the one vacant.
Mm-hmm.
And. Um, Jen DePietro wants to be the regular member. We know that.
I would make that motion.
Okay, so Jen DePietro reappointed as a regular member. Motion for reappointment, Bert Hanson.
We should probably.
I was gonna say, we need to do the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
Unless you wanna read them all off and just.
We can do them all at once, if that, if that will suffice, otherwise, if it's somebody new. I would be looking for a motion to.
I'll make a discreet motion, cause she's gonna change her role from associate to become a full member, which creates a vacancy for an associate. So I'll make that for Jennifer DePietro. To be a full member of the AgCom for a position of, what is it, three years?
Three.
For this year.
Yes, for three years.
Well.
It's a three.
It's for three years. So moved.
Roll call vote, Jason.
I'll second.
Did you second it?
I'm sorry, I'll second that.
Roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
All right. For three year terms, Bert Hanson, Angie Simone. That's it, for three years.
I will be looking for a motion to. Appoint, um, Bert Hanson and Angelina Simone to those three year. Terms.
Second.
Sure.
The others are associates.
That's your motion, second.
Roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
For a one year associate term. Jessica Whitmore Partner. Tom.
Yep.
Jadas. And. Lenita Boger.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
For. Board of Appeals. We have for a. These are. Th- this is, it says expired.
But it's not.
They are, this is when you run this, this is probably this, when you run this report, this would be their next. Expiration.
So you have two one years and one three year, right?
Yeah.
That's, we had reset that, because I, I thought we had already reset those to a one, two, and three, a couple of years ago.
You're associate for one. You have one regular term, the free.
Yes, there's.
This is.
Yeah, Chris Mascherini's term is expired.
Yeah.
And that would be a great.
Yeah.
And then the associates are, are they on your terms?
Yeah.
And that's fine. So then it's correct.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mr. Mascherini is, is asking to be for reappointment?
He has. Yes, these three reapplied.
So I'll make a motion for Chris Mascherini as a, a member of the Board of Appeals for three years.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes. And then Dan Tobias and Michael F. Arant. Uh, as associate members for a period of one year.
Roll, roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Was a cable advisory for me was the next.
Uh, we have Cemetery Commission. Gene Thoreau as the Graves Officer. Not as the Graves Officer.
Oh, but. He's the Graves Officer? Oh.
He has not reapplied, but.
I'd make a motion of why Gene Thoreau.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul, yes.
That is for a one year.
Yeah, turn.
Uh, we did. Their conservation is one of those, we are going to hold. And Jerry Patria, Dennis Clark, and Chris Pratt need to come back here.
Hundred percent.
Council on Aging.
Nice to speak.
Uh. This one, the terms are a little wonky here. Over time attrition, they are supposed to be no more than three. Reappointed in any year, so they've gone off kilter, so we're going to reappoint. Motion to reappoint. Um. Jack Pocai for one year. This term. And then a three year term. Continuing after that.
So that would be next year, we'd have to make a.
We'll do another one, yeah.
So I'll make him, or you wanna make that motion?
Yeah, let's do that one first, that's to get.
I'll second the motion for. Jack Pocai for a one year member to council on age.
Roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
For a three year term, regular three year term, Donna Foizie and Teresa Rogers.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
For associate members, one year, Elaine Boucher and Harriet Fisher.
So moved.
Roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Cultural Council.
Oh, boy, that's always a hot mess.
Yeah, it is.
I see confirming with council, so got a poll.
Right, first of all, we have a vacancy, and we have Sabrina Poehler here. Applying for that. So we can. Appoint Sabrina Poehler to replace Maria Gallo.
We'll be looking for that motion.
That was.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
All right, and then.
The rest, we're leaving the rest of political council alone for now?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, it says we have to confirm with the council.
There's that thing where you have to come off and.
I had Christine check with the state, and she just got back to me this afternoon, so we'll revisit. EDC is next.
Perfect, I'm glad to, cause Mr. Roach lost it.
So, we have a vacancy. For Amber and Inga. We have. Two new applicants, Bill Terry and Stephen Roche. Is it Roach or Roche? Which? Roche. So I'll make the motion to appoint. We can debate this, Bill Terry to finish in this term to six thirty twenty seven. And. For Stephen Roche to.
Just do, if it's more, different term, please do them one at a time, just, at least in the minutes, and. We're updating the town clerk.
So I'm in motion.
So Bill Terry to fill Inka Hotel's term to six thirty twenty seven, motion.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Stephen Roche to. Fill. Amber Box's term to six thirty twenty eight. Uh, that was a motion.
Second, roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you, aye. Doug Mogul, no.
Yes.
Okay, that. Leaves us one vacancy for Pam Slafani. And then we have to reappoint Greg Dialing, he was a one year with our. Additions last year. His term would be to six thirty twenty nine, I'll make that motion.
I will second the motion.
Roll call vote, Jason Proon, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Okay, so we've still run very. Historical Commission.
Hang on one second, can I make a, a suggestion?
Absolutely, sir.
How many members you got on there? Cause if you recall. One year ago, almost in a day. We expanded the size of that commission.
EDC?
Yes, by a few, now I think we might have an even number, so we probably gotta go and build this spot.
Yes.
But, uh, if not, you could always let this board constrict back to a, a realistic size, cause now remember. They have to have a certain number to, uh, get it for.
For.
So, just proof for thought, before we, before we turn the page.
I think I would have a conversation with. Their chair when they reorganize, and, um. And, and I can do that if you would like. Have that conversation with whoever the new chair will be.
I have no problem.
I know that, I know.
The room was full last year, and we were staring down the bar and making decisions.
And we couldn't, myself and Diane could not come to an agreement.
So we pumped it and made the commission bigger.
But they do have a, quite a full agenda on their horizon as well, I'm, I'm aware of.
And no argument, I just, I just wanted to call that out, cause now you actually have a vacancy coming out of appointment season, so.
Yep.
Cause they were up to.
But we didn't, we didn't move to appoint Mr. Roach.
Seven, nine, is that what we moved to, I can't remember.
Okay.
Correct. We appointed Mr. Roach.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, congratulations.
We did.
Thank you.
For waiting it out.
This kinda goes against the law, that I was trying to say a little bit earlier, but you had to just kinda sort this out.
All right, Historical Commission, we have. One vacancy. Um, Linda McQuaid has a remaining term to six thirty twenty seven, we have not heard from Erin personally, yes. We have not heard from Erin personally, but we did get Kirk's endorsement after he met with her. We can appoint her.
And did the other?
She did send a letter, which I had forwarded to you all earlier, I don't know if you saw those.
Which was that, I'm sorry?
Historical.
No, was the name?
Erin Villanueva.
Yes. I second your motion. Very good.
All right, so she will be appointed to fill the term to six thirty twenty seven.
After we walk on.
You know, to twenty. Six, right?
She's filling Linda McQuaid's.
Says seven, one, s- twenty six, so it'll be through six thirty twenty six.
Mine says twenty seven. Mine says six thirty twenty seven as well.
Subject to verification of the expiration date.
And then certainly.
You could just do it to twenty six, the rest of them are twenty sevens, you could stagger this one.
The other two, and the other two are expires, would run through twenty seven. So I would, and then.
They have not submitted a re, a reappointment request, um, they're meeting downstairs. Um, they're meeting downstairs.
Right now?
Run down and ask them, but um. What would you like to do? Would you like to reappoint and have them?
I would, they can.
Yeah, that's, if, if they don't want.
If they're meeting right now.
They're active, they're, they're the meetings.
I know, must, yeah, must.
And I know, you know, congratulations to those guys for, actually, you know, for the most part, uh. With, I think, one exception, who's had some other stuff going on. Uh, that board's actually gotten more active than it's been previous, so.
Yes.
Congratulations to them, so I was.
So motion to appoint Richard Marsill to six thirty twenty-seven and Mark Rankin to six thirty twenty-seven. He did secondary.
Yeah, oh, he did already.
You, roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Fangel, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Very good.
Lake Management. Um, on Lake Management, we had Jen Bernier interested, her main. Uh, DePietro. Her main goal is to be agricultural, its needs are available, she would like. To be considered. What do you want to do with that? There are. Expirations.
I think that that. That group does a phenomenal job, and we did find Jennifer has a home on AgCom as a full member now, correct?
Yes.
So I would. If, if those folks have indicated an, uh, interest to continue, I would support that.
They all have multiple times, they.
I know, they're, I know they did, that's why I'm kinda smiling.
Alright, so.
They all, they all came from Norm's IP address, but that's okay.
I saw how many of them were one.
Yeah.
Alright, so uh. Expirations. Appointment of Rick Wylot and. WK Phillips to six thirty twenty-five, that was a motion to.
Second, roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Fangel, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
For. Motion to appoint. For an expiration of six thirty twenty-seven. Dick Brannles. Malcolm DeBay, Michael DeBay. And Eric Muller.
I will second the motion. And I always call him Dr. Muller.
Roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Fangel, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
He submitted Eric.
I know, and he always tells me to call him Eric, and that's why I call him Dr. Muller.
Alright, Lake Management Canal. Expiring six thirty twenty-five, motion to appoint WK Phillips.
Second. Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Fangel, I. Motion to appoint for an expiration of six thirty twenty-seven, Malcolm DeBay, Michael DeBay, Dick Brannles, and Eric Muller.
Second, roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Fangel, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Um, LEP C. It says select board, do we?
We have to move, we should have done that right after the election, I think we might have actually.
Uh, I said I was gonna stay, and we did.
I think we did, I think we actually did vote it.
Do we need to appoint Nicole replacing Carl?
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Fangel, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
And everybody else is. Due to their positions everywhere else, I believe, right? Or do we?
No, there is, there is a public appointment.
Oh, because they do, okay.
No, 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 so, may I? I remember one I could see too. So.
It does expire, but.
But this is, it's not by virtue of their position. I don't even know if there's a concept, but there is a couple of members of the public. So I would also have, uh, Lisa Anderson. Come on. And then I believe Mr. Trummell has left, we're gonna need a new school person.
Yep.
Um.
And Paul Miles has resigned.
Yep, so.
So we need.
And you already have, I don't know if the chief is still on there or not. And then you, there was. See, these are select board appointments. This. Mr. Lynch, Mr. Kane. Um, but these are all select board appointments by virtue of their position, so I think we should go through them. And I don't know if they're expired, I think they, it's an annual appointment, so I think we should just roll through it.
Read the list.
Um.
They are all annual.
Yep, so here. We'll leave some vacancies and we'll have to take a note to reach out to the police department. Um. And I, did Mr. Kane or Mr.?
No, no one has.
Indicate an interest to that?
No.
So let's leave those for now. Um. Where's Joshua Tauss from?
He is the hospital.
Yes, yeah, so we'll.
You guys know?
Yep, so we would. Him, Cecil Lewis. Jessica Bishop. Jennifer Willard. Lisa Anderson, Randy Brown. Chief Banish, Thomas Hebert, Chief Stefanowitz. Nadine Signoni. Nicole Parker, Russell Anderson. Uh. To that, to LEP C.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Fangel, I.
Doug Morgan, yes, and Mr. Peron, I didn't leave you off, I believe we already.
We did, we had that discussion, you, you had asked me if I was gonna stay, and I said yes.
So someone needs to reach out to Mr. Kane and Mr. Lynch?
Yeah, see if they wanna continue. Who's the current chair, wasn't that Chief Banish?
It was.
Yes. Um, yes.
Chief Banish is online, but Chief Banish.
Yes.
Are you the current chair of LEP C?
Uh, I'm not actually, the emergency management director actually is.
Oh, so. Are you the vice chair?
Uh, nope.
Well, you're the one that's on that committee that's on this hall too, besides yourself and Mr. Peron, so. Do you have any thoughts on anyone that you, that we, you have a safety person that you wanna appoint, or as an alternate for the police department? To replace retired Sergeant Paul Miles?
At this point, I will put in Lieutenant Michael Taggart. As my alternate.
Oh, good, don't take him off mute.
Just, just.
Make a motion, no, he doesn't, he's lieutenant.
It's also.
Don't take him off mute, is that?
No, don't let him off mute, quick vote.
So, alright, I'll make a motion to appoint Lieutenant Taggart as the, uh, to the local emergency planning committee.
Second, roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Fangel, I.
Yes.
Alright, done.
Okay, can't get out of that now.
Done.
Congratulations, congratulations lieutenant.
Thank you. Alright, master plan implementation. Um, are we? Ready with that? How many members were we having from the public?
Oh man, we already hashed that six times.
Was it two? Three, two?
What did we decide?
Well done.
Three and one from the select board. And one from the planning board, that's five, perfect.
Alright, so we have. We heard from. Jessica Taylor. Marissa Cook Obregon, Pam Sclafani, and Norm Cheever. I did send, uh, did you get to review the documents I sent you earlier today?
I didn't, I saw them, but I haven't.
No, correct.
Karen, um. Karen is the one. Did I say she was, the class started today, so she couldn't.
You mentioned something, Karen.
Do I take a quick look?
That's her. Trans.
Uh, and she has a resume.
Oh, good, this, our grades are.
Good student.
That was an individual renown of some sort. What one, Ellen? Want to give Greg the bad news? Alright. You got reappointed, A D C.
Oh, I get reappointed?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, I, uh, I threatened Stephen here.
Of course.
He made it.
We certainly did.
Did, just, where's the GPS?
Yes, yeah, Jessica Taylor.
Right, but this one has not, we, we did not need her yet.
Correct, correct, because her class is tonight, she couldn't make it.
I offer a recommendation for you.
Say your name into the chair.
Arm Cheever, Richard Avon. Plan the board to seven. I will draw. Get your new blood. You got three. They need my services.
I think that was a long process with Mr..
Man, that cost us all, there was a lot of dinners and stuff involved in that negotiation to get to the, where we were, so I, I don't think it's a good idea here, to be honest with you. Um.
So, make an ask for it.
And I, you know, I think that there should be, I. May I, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
I, I really do think that there should be some continuity of someone. That was involved with the process, I'm, I'm completely open to, uh, having. You know, some new blood on there, but I think that there should be some experience and, and um. To be honest with you, Norm, I think, you know, a lot of the. The metrics and measurement that you had proposed to be in the master plan that were adopted would make you an excellent candidate to be on there. Along with, um. You know, whether it's, uh, Ms. Taylor or Ms. uh, Sclafani, um. To round out that. Committee, I, I have no objection, and we'll see where we go from there. It, and just like the master plan advisory committee. There was plenty of people that. Sat in the audience that had a full participatory role, short of voting, and they didn't take a ton of votes. On the master plan advisory committee, any other than, you know, accepting minutes and stuff like that, I really think it was. Um, you know, depending on how whoever is going to be the chair of that board decides how to run it.
Yeah.
It can be a very open and, 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 you know. Productive process, and it's not like, well, you're not a member on the board, you can't speak, I, I don't think the board, that meeting will run like that. A lot of other boards have, uh. Run that way and taken, you know. More input that, than is provided for under the law, and as is their right as the chair. You know, there's times when you have to run your meeting with the members on your board and make those votes and decisions, but. You know, others can take ideas and, and thought elsewhere, I know EDC's done it, other boards have done it. To their credit, so, um. I'm not gonna propose a slate here, that's just my recommendation at this moment, unless the chair is looking for one. But that would have been, um. Do we want references?
Uh, I, I have.
I was going to. I was gonna put, Mr. Cheever was. Yes.
I think we're in agreement with Mr. Cheever.
Not gonna let him get off that easy.
So there's one, and then you wanna make that as a, and that's, are these gonna be like, there, did we stagger the terms, or we're just gonna call them, what are the terms? That we came up with for that board?
They're all showing yearly right now.
I think they're setting year. I believe we set a year off the ground, and then. One year, I think, yeah, one year.
Yeah.
Um. And how many did we say, residents?
Three.
Three.
Plus, one planning board member and one select board member, which should be separate votes from this.
Alright, my, you want my three choices?
Go for it.
Vice chair.
Mine. He's the chair. Mine were Norm Cheever, Pam Sclafani, and Jessica Taylor.
Well, then I would just second your motion.
Okay.
And, I look for a roll call vote. Jason Peron, I.
Fangel, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Um. Select board number. I won't nominate Jason Peron.
Maybe he'll next, we don't know that. Um, me? Um. Not opposed, let's.
I have no objection, I wish I had more time, I really would relish to do it, having sat on the impact. Um, I certainly will be a frequent visitor. Um.
Me too.
And hopefully active participant.
You know, I don't believe in this yet.
Well, we'll see who's the chair if they allow it, but I'm just saying, I think, you know, this is a critically important.
I would say this is something that's. As it's been. Brewing, stewing, however you wanna put it, it's. Kind of been on my radar. Um, and my, my hope is I will be here next year to fo, to continue. But at least I can put a little bit of a stamp on it now, if that's what you guys agree upon.
You have expressed interest in doing it, um. And I nominate you to do that, because there's another component to this of the housing production plan.
Mm-hmm.
Which I really wanna focus on.
Okay.
It's not, it's, it, it kinda went with the master plan.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And that's what I really wanna focus on, so. Um.
I'll second the motion, and I just, I just wanna say. Um, before we vote, and I. Nothing, this is totally a great idea, let's keep moving, I will tell you that. To a border commission, and I. I try to watch every single video of every meeting that I don't attend in person. It's front of mind for every boarding commission, like, hey, this is in the master plan, we need to be doing this, or. Hey, this is in the master plan, we shouldn't be doing this, right, so. It's gonna be up to the, the master plan implementation committee to kinda. Nudge boards where they can, or, and also, I know Norm is gonna, is up for this, is, you know, take a look at some of the metrics that are in. In the master plan to kinda gauge progress. You know, certain things we've done, certain things have to be done. Um, but I, I just, you know, I know we've mentioned it on this board, I, I've heard it on the planning board, I've heard it at EDC, I've heard it at Ag, where. Everyone's cognizant of the master plan, and we just need to make sure we keep that front of mind, so I'll second the motion.
I would be looking for a roll call vote, I'm going to abstain.
Fangel, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Before we move on from that. Are we going to actually give them a written? Charge? What their duties are, or are we gonna let them flail and figure it out?
I believe you did some research on this with other.
Well, I had submitted to him to talk to Mr. Dorian. But what is their?
I think the first.
What, what are, what is their power?
Sure. Part of it's in the master plan, it, it delineates what that epic does, though it didn't, did not delineate the competition, because. We couldn't come to an agreement then, so, um. That was probably the most hotly contested part of entire master plan, was the compensation of the master plan implementation committee. Um, me and. Me and Chairman Phelps. Darnier got angry at each other, but, um. I think that would be a great meeting for, um. Yourself. To attend.
I would love to.
And, and, and even if you have to post it, right, if you'd like for me to attend as well, because it is a subcommittee of the, of. This board, and have the chair of the planning board there, because. Uh, he threatened to go to town meeting with a bylaw if we don't, uh. Do everything correctly.
Yeah, I, I think we really, I think we really should.
So, and, and kinda figure out where, figure out what that is, both some master plan, you've developed some great stuff, we all have ideas.
Can you pull something together with? I, I guess that would be select board and when.
Yeah, whatever that meeting's gonna be, just, we just post it, because if we all show up, we start talking about something that is in front of this board. Uh, we probably should post it. It's different if, you know, if we go sit in the audience of an EDC meeting, and we're not talking about a topic that's in front of us, but this is actually a direct charter committee, so.
Okay, moving on, I don't know what time it is. Um. PVP C.
We did that.
Jessica Thornton?
Oh. That needs to come from.
It says select board.
Yeah, but we usually get a recommendation from the planning board and honor that. She's on it now, right?
Yeah.
I'll second your motion.
It's a wonder.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Fangel.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Uh, planning board associate number.
That is.
That made her wait, yep.
And we, uh.
That one. Again, Connor was more interested in the conservation, but this was a secondary to him, it's human not interested, but she did. Reapply, it doesn't say that, but she did, Diane Jessica. Uh. So that is a second. We did that one. Sealer weights and measures, I know he has an agreement, but it says he's an appointment.
I don't think that's, that's one of those employee things, I don't know that, I don't know if we need to do it or not.
Newer implementation committee. For a one-year term. Frida Brown, Jerry Patria, and Randy Brown. Expiring six thirty twenty-five, that was a motion to reappoint.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Fangel, I.
Doug Morgan, yeah.
Southwick Housing Authority, we have the tenant member to reappoint, she did reapply, Lenis Taveri for a term to expire. It says five fourteen twenty-nine. Um, so I'll make a motion to do that.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Fangel, I. And I think we're done. And I'll go there through. And, uh. We'll determine who needs to. Or whom we passed, and we'll get that on the next, next thing.
Like I said, we're. We're gonna work on it.
It's so painful.
Okay, let's see, so we are. So we don't have. We're not gonna ratify that. So option C succeed is North Pond Task Force.
Course, we met on eight twenty-seven, had a very productive meeting. Um, we are meeting again Friday the thirteenth. We all have assignments to do and. Uh, we're coming back with some additional information. We addressed access to the parking lot, no parking signs along the streets. Access to the shoreline, restoration to certain areas. Signage enforcement is a big one and we're looking at bylaws um, or enhancing bylaws. Funding to do some of these things is a big one. Everybody's searching for funds or begging. And again, we'll have a recap. After we need, I expect to have a recap after our next meeting on Friday to bring back two guys. Um, we did discuss keeping the parking area closed. For some time still. Um, until a full plan is presented and approved, but a soft reopening. On the area because this state does not like closed, so we took off the words. Conservation area is closed and just said the parking lot is closed on the website.
Looks for me for now.
So.
I mean, I know they said what they said, but if.
That would put them in a bay.
Yeah.
That was kind of.
But if we run into a, which I don't foresee it this time of year.
So.
But if we run in another problem, then.
Bunch of recommendations for you.
Yep, you did read some of the, I read a lot of the stuff that was said, come on. I mean. Your.
Oh. Okay.
So, that's all we got on that.
For now.
All right, LPP discussion vote. Norm, you wanna come on? So. I'm gonna go into, I spoke with the call earlier today, so here's the, the sticking point with Suffield is they still want. A voting voice now. I'm gonna just gonna put this the way I feel, so. The whole point of this was to get this LPP permit in place, get the, get the proper funding and proper money that. We've been searching for to get compensated properly and cover the losses. Um, we've been able to do that portion of it. The biggest portion is Suffield wanting a voice. Now, Norm, you're on their. You're on their conservation committee, but you don't have a voice. That was one of the things I expressed with. Mister Maul is a similar, was a liaison. Because. Well, I, and I'm gonna put this the way I feel and. To me, to give them a voice personally, if we could do it. I would do it because, and I know Ms. Gail might disagree with me on this. Is it's. Their vote, and I, and I don't want to put minimize this would be inconsequential and for in most points. And the one thing they are really focused on is the lake, and I completely understand, even before I moved to Southwick, I've heard this. Suffield taxation without representation, and I know you've been here quite some time. So you, I know you've heard it numerous times and I understand it. I've done a lot of research. Uh, Ms. Gail mentioned Winchenden, they do not do their own LPP. They do strictly chapter ninety-one. Um, they don't even really enforce it. Okay, so the people that I talked to really couldn't answer my question on that. They don't. Winchenden and Ridge, I even reached out to Ridge, New Hampshire, because that's, those are the two towns. Ridge has like a part-time town clerk there here these hours that I haven't heard back from them in two weeks, so. Um, so basically, to shorten this. Most of the agreement is that everybody wants is there, there's those sticking points. Norm and I are going to go. One last time, and at that point, if we can't get this across, I'm gonna come back and ask the vote, the board to vote on what. They've agreed to and we either say yay or nay, and if we say nay. I go back and say, this is the only thing you're gonna get. And if not, and I've, as I've explained in the past. You know, I think it's beneficial somewhere for some give and take on this because. It just becomes a gigantic hassle, as Norm, you know, with the, we're gonna enforce this person, this person isn't gonna pay, I'm not paying them. So that's just where that's at. Um, so Norm and I are gonna take one last stab. To get this, to try and get, it it's not Mister Maul, I guess it's his, his Concom and his select board that are very. Hung up on a voting member.
The words came out of his mouth.
Yes. They're hung up on the voting member.
Oh, no, he said.
So.
That we have too much power.
Oh, I haven't heard that one.
He said they came out of his mouth, it's on this recording.
Interesting.
Who has too much power that our conservation?
Conservation Commission.
Well, that's an interesting one I hadn't heard.
Let me. If I may, so I did look up ex officio just to be sure. It's by virtue of their position. And it is a vote, if they were, it would supplant a member of our conservation commission, as I understand it, because. It would supplant a member of our conservation permission. Potentially, I think we'd have to reach out to town council because as of today.
We still have that other issue hanging.
Come back to that. As of today, the conservation is composed according to mass general law. This board voted to, in my opinion, diminish the power of this board by allow, by permitting the conservation. A portion of the conservation commission to be appointed. Therefore, assenting to this would further diminish the authority of the. Of this board because it would supplant, potentially supplant one additional appointed member. Of the conservation commission. And I also think we'd have to talk to town council, whether it's even legal. For someone to serve on our conservation commission that's not. A a resident and vote, registered voter in the town of Southwick. And for those reasons, I have reservations and it's, there's not a reciprocal piece. I found it also interesting.
I did read out, they asked for some reciprocity and. I just received the email back today. There is not an appetite for that.
And and I, and I also appreciate one hundred percent your position of, hey, we're sending you over the mountain, then you come back and then we yell at you. So.
Oh, I don't feel like I yelled that at all. No, no, I just, you know, like I, I I've said to people, you know, it's almost kind of my, in my police role. So the reverse psychology thing, hey, I'm gonna give you what you want, but you're not really getting anything type thing. And in a sense, that's the way I look at it, you know, because I'm looking at at it from, through my glasses on that side. But absolutely, you know, you're right. The the change in the way the structure of the the conservation commission is, you know, um, changed the. The reach, for lack of a better term, of the select board, um, and I understand that point, I mean. I would love to give them, and I have no problem personally, and I've tried to push this point numerous times. An official liaison that has full discussion, debate, and whatever powers, but with no official vote. I think that would work great for both of us, but. Apparently. We have too much power, I.
I'm gonna restate my position if I may.
Absolutely.
I keep saying they have representation on lake management. Lake management has a lot of discretion in what they do, what. Projects they work on, what they address. They have three. Members.
There's five Connecticut members.
Five.
Forty-six, forty-five percent of is Connecticut.
So they have a say on the lake, which is their concern here. They need to recognize that, and if they don't like those particular members, then they need to suggest other members. To our board to consider. How did those members get on there? Did we solicit them? Did they volunteer? How did they get on there in the first place? They can get members they want. On that thing, and then they have to recognize those members on their side. There's no reciprocity because they don't want to give up their jurisdiction, but they're asking us to. Makes no sense. I would never vote for that.
For the voting then.
Yes.
I I understand that.
And I, and I'm not gonna do this agreement just to get sixty-nine hundred dollars. And give up that jurisdiction to another state, never mind another town.
The conservation commission, much like our planning board or other, uh, certain other boards and commissions are. They're chartered by. By the Wetlands bylaw and the other bylaws that they're they're subject to, mass general law. And so I understand the concern and I I agree with you.
And lastly, I'm sorry, and lastly. That means that their voting members get to vote on North Luna Street. If something comes up.
That wasn't the way it was structured.
I I get that, that's. You can't be a little pregnant on that.
In my, if you're on, you're on. Here's, that's why I said this, this has gone back.
Split vote.
This has gone back. Let me just address that issue because I had said it would only be based on lake memory, mid-lake issues. And issues that were border. And, you know, we've dealt with Suffield, South Lake border and lake issues. Again, that I got.
That's not in here.
I understand that.
And that isn't gonna make a difference on my vote.
I understand that. So I, like I said, I just got the email back that was supposed to address these issues literally this morning. Um, so didn't have time to even speak with Mister Maul and I I completely agree with you on that aspect of it. Um, so again, I still.
Liaison is fine, they already have five.
I get. I get that, but you know, I'm I'm just gonna say they did allow, however, a little input Norm has. They have lake management members, we have lake management members, and they did allow him as a liaison in whatever form they let you onto his time. So that's. That, I get that.
And I'm a hundred percent in favor of that. I mean, because they they have an interest, like no one doubts their interest.
I I'm by no means saying. We gotta give it to them. You know, I want to make that pointedly clear, and like I said, I don't feel you guys are yelling at me, so don't feel bad. You know. The whole, I I wholeheartedly agree with both aspects that they they want to voice and you, like you said, you understand. Um, I've tried to drive that point home to Mister Maul. I I mean, I wouldn't be personally against it if we could figure a way. To do it, but obviously there are some drawbacks to it. We lose a member. A a vote here in town and like Diane said, there's no guarantees unless we were to put it in writing, which I had sent back in my email that it would only affect the lake. And border border issues, but then when he kicked me back and said there's not an appetite. On their side. To do anything other than allow Norm a voice. That's where we're at right now. That's why I wanted to really address.
Like for seven thousand dollars, they buy a seat on our conservation commission, that seems like that.
I mean, I'm at the point honestly right now, or if we, if we can't come to an agreement in this next. By the time we have the next meeting, I say, and don't take this the wrong way, let them deal with chapter ninety-one and. We'll just go from there.
Right.
Can I ask a question, number eleven? Should a third party audit?
We did, that's.
We mind meld before this meeting?
Actually, uh, Norm, you did, we, that's one of the things we're going to discuss. Of the third party, the third party audit, to try and put that to to best the bed as as well. Um, okay, I'm gonna be, and I'm gonna be honest here, I can completely understand why they want it audit. They don't trust us.
Hundred percent, as long as they pay for it and do it, and they just put that one sentence in and I'm totally game.
They haven't seen my final numbers, but I have. Photos of every dock and every boat.
I know.
In Connecticut.
Who knows to you?
Well, I can give them.
Yes, because I did get a comment from Mr. Well, somebody was calling me today saying there's people going out taking pictures. I'm like, I'm sure it's probably Norm.
And we got approval from.
They knew.
Call them, we're gonna do.
They did know.
Cause I would never go with number eleven. If it's not satisfactory to them. They're gonna void the agreement anyway.
That's why I'm sitting here.
And I would also add, I think, I I it caught my eye. I wouldn't be opposed if they wanted to audit, audit the the data. At fully at their expense.
Well, that's what I said, I asked.
It doesn't say that there, and I don't want them to do an audit and send, you know, hire Deloitte and have them come back with a.
Well, I'd ask them, have you guys even looked into what kind of audit? And he said, no.
But it should be just, however it is, it should be expensive, it should be borne by Suffolk.
Absolutely.
We've, we've been very fortunate that we have volunteers like Norm who who have done it, and I. Don't doubt Norm's numbers for one second.
No, I don't.
And he uses great sunscreen.
But if anybody wants to audit it, by all means, but it's at your expense to audit and then we can reconcile.
Yeah.
So. Two other pieces of information.
Yep.
The eyes and ears for the LPP program is like management, not conservation. They get all the grief.
On a manner.
So. And they got four members from Suffield on 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 lake management and one from East Grant.
Yep.
Okay.
Do they go to the conservation commission or the select board meetings in their town?
No, well, not not for these issues.
They might. Public comment.
Yeah. And then the second thing is our vice chair is one of the. Suffield. Members.
Things.
Of conservation.
Of lake manager.
Of lake manager.
Yeah.
Oh, your vice chair of lake management is is from Connecticut. Well, and. And to Norm's point, he's a hundred percent right, and we've gone through this, we actually, um. Did a mission statement together a couple of years ago because we kind of had a discussion about that, because. Lake management is a ad hoc subcommittee of of this board. Right? So they don't have a statutory power that exists within that committee. Uh, it exists to assist this board with any lake issues. But, and therefore their enforcement authority rests with the. The boards, commissions, or agencies that have that authority, whether it's. The harbor master, the Southwood Police Department, Conservation Commission, or even the planning. Right? If it's a zoning issue, so, um, and they've done an excellent job of that, but that's a kind of a good example of. You know, we'll take all that input and they they're very vocal and very active when they have a concern of bringing it forth. And bring it to those other boards, and then what we did with their mission statement was to. Emphasize that if they're not getting the desired result from the board that is chartered. With that authority or vested with that authority to come back to their appointing authority, the bird dog, i.e. I, you know, for example, conservation chooses not to do their job in their opinion. It's our, their job to come back to us, because at the time, that conservation commission is also was appointed and still is appointed by this board. If they're not fulfilling their obligations under mass general law, well, then we are almost duty bound to appoint a conservation commission that does. So, um, at least until. That bill is signed by the governor and then it'll be up to the town, uh, the voters of the town of Southwick direct. To, um, you know, put someone up to to run. Uh, for that board that hopefully will enforce mass general law.
So that's where we are. I don't wanna, we've already passed our seven thirty time limit, so. Um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna beat this any harder. Norma, do you have anything else you wanted to? So Norm and I are gonna go and give this one last try, and if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. I've. I've explained the promise, the problems that come with, if it doesn't. And that's where we're at.
Don't take the military option off the table.
Thank you, Norm.
I have a something.
You've seen that segment, right?
I would, I can't really joke about what I want to joke about. It's not a, not an inappropriate thing, but it just, it's not a problem.
It's a friendly rivalry.
Yes, exactly.
Town of Southway. We love the town of South. You know, Suffield too.
Yep. Uh, Mister Molgin, uh. The acronym HSICIMA. T-Mobile Hometown Grant, um, I spoke.
But you were also gonna get us your package.
Did not, I've been just embroiled. I will get it, a hundred percent.
I I feel for you. I know what you're going through right now. So T-Mobile Hometown Grant, Lisa Anderson and Kara are writing me uh, two letters for the stakeholders, as I said I needed. Um, I might reach out to, um, one other person. Um, and then that goes out and we wait and determine, um, because I did. It's not a requirement, but the couple of towns that I've reached out to that have received these grants, they said the stakeholder comment and letters of help, yeah. So, um. That's where we are on that, uh, and then we're at master plan. So. Know who that is now? Other old business, I have none, uh, as far as old business, other than, um. So, I'm good, Diane?
Mister Mogul? I have a couple. Um, first of all, reminder to everyone. Um, that we do have the nine eleven ceremony on the, at the firehouse on, on the Wednesday, September eleventh. It's always well attended. Um, and I want to thank the fire department and the police department for continuing to put that on so that. Um, we remember those that were lost that day. Um, in that evening, Rotary is having their steak roast Wednesday night, nine, um, of nine eleven, I believe it's at the Legion, probably six o'clock, I'm guessing on the time.
I'm representing the select board there.
I'm gonna do my darndest to attend, but I. I will be a paying customer.
I'm technically a member of both, so.
And then, yes, and I also once again want to put in a plug for the fire department versus police department. Charity softball game for September twenty-first. I think the game's at eleven o'clock. At Wally Park, uh, please come, please give till it hurts, uh, it's for a very worthy cause. And, um.
We want to make a motion to put a select board member on one of the team.
Uh, negative, we will have a celebrity umpire and and, uh. I've I've asked, uh, Mister Rankin, a Die Hard Whalers fan, who also calls softball games to help, uh, umpire. Well, we'll see, and so I think that's gonna be great and, um. I don't know if it's appropriate, so I'll, um, at at risk, I just want to congratulate my employer. Um, and and the town of Southwick. They're commissioning their, uh, brand new eighty-four thousand square foot facility tomorrow. Um, as it comes into use and and it's also. Uh, Mister Wall's eightieth birthday, he's also a member of our park and rec. They do, I believe they do. I'm I'm only involved in getting the, helping to get the building a little bit ready, the planning of the event, not on the.
Well, I, I want to, you know, with you, because I'm not going to be able to be there. I'm gonna have to be in Boston.
Um, congratulations to them for for their hard work and continued growth and it's been good, it's been a great relationship with the town. Overall.
Heard they got a decent management team.
It's a big job.
Yes, so, but. But thank you. That's it for me.
That's it. Nicole, anything?
Did you, no, so.
I'm just gonna hit that.
Yeah, no, no, I have.
The end, end, that's it. Lady? No, all right, and last. But not least, like I said, I stuck all this stuff at the back because I wanted to get everybody else out of here. So the only thing we have left to do is we acknowledge the payroll warrant. Twenty-five oh five, dated eight twenty-six twenty-four, in the amount of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. And fifty, no, two hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm like, what? Okay, and fifty cents.
You got it.
Acknowledged payable warrant, number two fifty B, dated eight twenty twenty-four, in the amount of eight hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. Eight hundred forty-seven, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. And acknowledged payable warrant, two thousand, or twenty-five oh six B, dated nine four twenty twenty-four. In the amount of four hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. And.
Motion to adjourn.
There we go.
Back in.
Roll call vote, Jason Pro and I.
Fangel, I.
Doug Mogul, yes.